Give us the Lord's name on your heart.
All right, I'm out of the singing business. Where you?
Where you? No, I won't say.
Don't make it any worse than it already is today. When I mess up, it's a mess. Well, we've enjoyed it this week. It's been good. I'm so thankful for all of you that have come out, taking time to, I know you're busy, and it's a joy that you would gather together night after night, and still be happy about it. Amen. What can change us more than anything else is our experiences that we have with God. Our experiences. Not somebody else's, but ours. And the experience that I wanted to just reiterate this evening was the three things that must happen in our lives for us to be victorious. Number one, we need to have a Gethsemane. You understand what I'm talking about? What does that mean? Nevertheless, not, not my will, Jesus said, but thy will. So you trade in your will for God's will. Doesn't matter what you think. It really doesn't. Doesn't matter what I think. It matters what God thinks. You gotta have a Gethsemane. Number two, you've gotta have a crucifixion. A death to self. We are our biggest problem. Don't think everybody else has got problems. Think about your problems. And you're deceived if you think you have no problems. Because I don't care who you are, I don't care what your background is, every one of us have problems. Sometimes it's pride. Sometimes it's running the mouth. Sometimes it's laying out when you should be attending. It might be neglecting God's Word. It might be not reaching others for Christ. Could be a lot of things, couldn't it? If we die to self, we become alive unto God. When we say, "Not my will, but thine be done", we are letting God take over. Number three, resurrection. A resurrection. I am victorious because Christ makes us victorious. Did you hear that? Jesus rose from the dead, didn't he? On the third day, he rose. He's not here, for he's risen, as he said. Come see the place where the Lord lay. And go quickly and tell the disciples that he alive. We have no reason for failure in our lives. If it happens, we say, "Lord, you must have allowed that to come into my life, so what I'm gonna do is I'm going to die to that thing that came into my life, that I might not let it hinder me from living for you." I don't care what happens in your life. You say, "Well, it's easy for you to say. You haven't had it happen to you, what I can't happen to me." Whatever comes my way, God will give me the the power and the grace to deal with it. Sometimes God sends judgment. Judgment. You ever been judged by God? If you've been judged by God, it means you are loved by God. You're loved by God. And he wants you to surrender and say, "Lord, I needed that spanking. Thank you." Because it's gonna make me more like you instead of like me. How many understand what I just said? You got it? So, I want you every day to say, "I've gotta, I've gotta do my Gethsemane, my crucifixion, and my resurrection." You know, people wanna be like Christ, but they don't wanna have to go through what Christ went through. "Yay, and all that will live, God being Christ Jesus, shall ah..."
Suffer persecution.
So get ready. It's coming. But greater is he that is in you than he that is in the world. And shouldn't we learn from our mistakes? How many think we should learn from our mistakes?
Amen.
I've discovered something about mistakes. When I don't learn from them, I repeat them.
Yeah.
Can I get an amen right there?
Yeah.
Really, it's an old me, because I can't believe that I'm so stupid and so irrational that God has to put me through the wringer to get my attention. But he loves me. He says, "Whatever it takes." My mother used to spank me. And she said to dad once, she just said to my dad, her husband, David, "Does spanking work?" He said, "God says it does. Just keep doing it, Lois." And here I stand tonight preaching the word of God. In spite of myself, God chose me. And he chose you, and he wants to use you. Are you willing to be used of God?
Amen.
Great. Let's go to Matthew chapter nine. Matthew chapter nine. We're going to read verse thirty-five to verse thirty-eight. Follow closely, Matthew twenty, or nine, rather, nine, verse thirty-five. Nine thirty-five of Matthew. "And Jesus went about all of the cities and villages, teaching in their synagogues and preaching the gospel of the kingdom, and healing every sickness and every disease among the people. But when he saw the multitudes, he was moved with compassion." Oh, underline that, "moved with compassion." "Because they fainted, and they were scattered abroad as sheep having no shepherd. Then said he unto his disciples, The harvest truly is..."
Plenteous.
Plenteous, but the laborers are...
Few.
Ooh, I hate to hear that. The laborers are what?
Few.
They're few. Pray therefore the Lord of the harvest, and he will send forth laborers...
Into his harvest.
Into his harvest. Lord, on this closing evening of this revival meeting, God do almighty work.
Amen.
In Jesus' name. Amen. I hope you're taking notes tonight, because I'm gonna give you some things I want you to write down. Okay?
I gotta watch the distance.
You got it. Good point. That's what you do. Amen. He talks about a harvest that's plenteous. He talks about laborers that are few. He talks about praying for the harvest, and then he's asking for laborers. God's always looking for someone to serve him.
Amen.
I want you to remember that. Some people are new Christians, but it doesn't mean you can't serve the Lord. In fact, the fastest way to grow in the Lord is to start serving him. Amen.
Amen.
Get involved in serving the Lord. What can I do, pastor? How can I be a part of this ministry and help this ministry to grow? Doesn't that make sense?
Amen.
Things don't grow because nobody's growing. When people are growing, the church grows. That's important. Now here, I want you to write this down. I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to you from a farmer's perspective. Okay? Are you ready for this? We're talking about harvest. The title of my message is Harvest in Our Lifetime. Like we sang Revival in Our Lifetime, it's now Harvest
Amen.
In Our Lifetime. Okay? Now, number one, write this down. The preparation of the soil. The preparation of the heart. The preparation of the soil, the preparation of the heart. A farmer goes out and he prepares the soil before he can ever put seed in the ground. Why? Because the ground is hard. It's called fallow ground. It's gotta be plowed, it's gotta be dragged, it's gotta be prepared, so that when the seed goes in, it germinates and comes up. And all of a sudden, out in the field, you see rows of corn. But they were just like this, and now they're like this. You've got to prepare the soil. Now, the hearts of people need to be prepared. How do you prepare a person's heart? Well, you gotta give them the gospel. You gotta give them the truth of God's Word, whether it be in the nursing home, whether it be in the jail, whether it be door to door. Don't stop door to door. You've gotta still get out and talk to people. You'll die if you don't get out and talk to people. Give out gospel tracks. Everybody here ought to be giving out gospel tracks. That's, that's sowing the seed, number two. Number two, there has to be the planting of the seed. If you have the seed in the barn, what good is it? You gotta get the seed out of the barn. What if the farmer's lazy and says, "Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go sow the seed today." That'd be like a church where the track rack is always full and nobody's taking anything out of it. Come on now. Seed, the sowing of the seed is the word of God. The tracks are the seed that we give to the hearts of people. And somebody reads it and goes, "You know what? I think I'm gonna go over there to Lighthouse Baptist Church."
Amen.
You can't saturate too much. And most churches don't even saturate. You would not believe, "I gotta, I gotta do this, Ann, in the next twenty-five or thirty churches, I should check to see if they have tracks. If they don't, we're gonna do a percentage. And we're gonna find out how many churches have tracks in their church that they give out to people, or churches that don't have tracks, that don't give out to people." Fair and square? I'll get back to you on that. Okay? So number two, you've got to plant the seed. You gotta give the gospel. Giving the gospel is not saying this, "Hello, I'm Dan Nickerbocker. I'm from Lighthouse Baptist Church, and I just would like you to come and visit with us. It'd be so wonderful to have you come. Boy, you have a great day. I didn't sow any seed. I didn't even give them a track. I invited them to a church. Now they may come. Then they'll get the seed. But what if they don't come? You lost opportunity to plant some seed in their life." Give out the gospel tracks. We used to go to the hospital to visit, and there was a thing in the elevator that you could put a little track right in there. It's a perfect place for it. I think that was where they put the license that they had inspected, and there was a little thing you could just put it right in there, stick it right in there. And we had people come to our church, "I got your track in the elevator at the hospital." We were sowing seeds. Number three, we gotta pray the Lord of the harvest to send forth laborers. We gotta pray for the harvest. Amen. That's what farmers do.
Yeah.
Farmers spend a bunch of money to get all of the, all of the soil prepared. They get, they put the, the seed in the ground, they put fertilizer out. That costs money. So what do they do? "Oh, God, send rain." The rain prepares the increase. If that seed dies in the ground and doesn't grow, you wasted your money. So what do we do? We pray. "Oh, God, give us rain." God, please help the people that got tracks to read it.
Amen.
More than one person has come to church because of tracks, I can tell you, and millions have gotten saved through gospel tracks. You don't ever underestimate the silent witness. That's the silent witness. That's, that, that track cannot produce anything unless it's what? Red. Okay? Those seeds can't grow unless the rain comes down upon them. Boy, it's so neat. I love to look at a field that's planted with corn, and it's only this high, and you can see rows and rows of it. I mean, you can see it for, for the whole distance of the field. You're like, "Wow, look at all those plants." Why? Well, because we prepared the soil, we, we planted the seed, and now we're watching the rain come down, and woo, it's up, it's up six inches. Oh, the farmer's happy about that. Boy, you wait till they get up like this, and they've got great big years of corn on them, and the, the farmer is ecstatic. It's harvest time.
Amen.
Oh, they get that, they get that combine out there, right? And, and they, they start bringing in that corn, or whether it's wheat, they, they bring it all in, and then what happens then? They can sell it. Pay their bills. Do you realize how many farmers live by faith? Because if there's no rain, there's no harvest. And what we must do is we must ask God to reign a harvest for Lighthouse Baptist Church and for the cause of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
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 All right, write this down. Number four, the pandemic in harvest. Have you ever heard of a pandemic in harvest? Have you ever known a torrential downpour to wipe out the wheat? Have you ever heard of hail coming down and wiping out the harvest? You know, Israel decided they wanted a king. "We wanna be like all the other nations." Samuel got upset about it. And the Lord said, "Samuel, don't you worry about it. The problem's not with you. They don't like me. They want a king like every other nation instead of me." And you know what God did? God wiped out their harvest. Yeah. First Samuel twelve, if you want to look at it later. What's a pandemic? What would we classify as a pandemic when it comes to spiritual things? It would be that we have no vision, we have no motivation, we have no burden, and we have no praise. Because when you don't produce a crop, how can you be praising the Lord? All you'll do is feel sorry for yourself. A lot of churches get depressed and discouraged because they didn't do what God wanted them to do, and they didn't understand it. Well, nobody came. Well, you didn't go out after souls. Don't expect a harvest if you don't plant some seeds. You gotta get God in on your program. Amen.
Amen.
Am I telling it like it is? You get a, you get a burden, you get motivated, you get a vision, and you will be praising God, and this place will start filling up. You know there's more people here this year than there was last?
Amen.
Yes.
How many, how many noticed that? God's trying to do something here.
Amen.
God's working. When you pray, and you visit, and you pray, and you visit, and you stay happy in Jesus, you stay happy in Jesus, and you keep right with God, God's obligated to pour out his blessing on this place.
Amen.
If you're fighting, forget it. If you're not serving like you should, forget it. Many churches have died because they stopped doing the right things. And they did the wrong things. All right, number five, the praising, the praising. Oh, listen. If you don't have a pandemic, you'll thank God for that. Amen? Right? We don't need pandemics. We already had one. Right? Did we ever have a pandemic? Has the church ever been hurt by the pandemic?
No.
Oh, man. And you know what? I wanna tell you something, though. Some churches are doing better now than they did before.
That's right.
I heard of one pastor that said, "Thank God for the pandemic." And somebody said, "Why?" He said, "All the wicked people that were in my church that were giving me trouble all left." Praise God.
Amen.
And we got rid of the grippers and the complainers, and, and now we have revival in our church.
Amen.
So he's praising the Lord for a pandemic. That's almost shocking, but it happened. We don't need to have a pandemic. We get thoroughly right with God. We have our Gethsemane and our crucifixion and our resurrection like Jesus did. And man, we are soaring like eagles. The praising. You think that farmer's happy about getting all that crop in? Oh, let me tell you something. When all of the hay is in and the barn is filled, thank you, Lord.
Amen.
And he goes and pays off his tractor. He gets what he needs for the future. Yeah. He's able to get everything done. You know, God's church never goes without when God's people are giving.
Amen.
Every need is supplied. That's how great God, our, great our God is.
Amen.
The praising. You know, we gotta spend more time praising the Lord. Thank God for the little things that happen to you.
Amen.
Wow, so-and-so came back.
Yes.
Praise our Lord. God answered my prayer. Let me write that down. I prayed for that person, and they got saved. I prayed for that person. They found the Lord and they were baptized. I prayed for that person. Wow, they're now serving in the church. Amen.
Amen.
Wasn't it Moses? Wasn't it you? Like, did the offering, prayed for the first time at the altar? That's a milestone. That's huge. When anybody does anything for the Lord. Gary came to the church. Boy, I love that great thing he carries. I just hope it doesn't swallow him. But I love to hear that. Well, God gave him that gift that he's using instead of burying it.
Amen.
Kind of hard to bury it.
I could go on and on. I could go on and on. Your faithfulness pays off.
Amen.
Keep praising the Lord. Number six, give to the Lord's work. I wanna tell you a story about a church that was ready to close their doors. The pastor hadn't been paid for way over a year. There was a couple of windows that had been cracked. Somebody threw a stone through them. The roof was leaking. They hadn't paid their missionaries. They had, no money was coming in. It was terrible. The missionaries were being, we had to, they had to call them and say, "Well, you know, we're just going through a tough time right now. We can't take care of..." Even the church looked unkept. It needed to be painted. So one of the men of the church said to the people, this is not the pastor talking, this is one of the men. He said, "Could you, um, let me be responsible for the finances of the church for one year?" And everybody's, "Yeah! We'd love you to be responsible." He said, "But you can't say anything to anybody. Don't tell anybody I'm doing it. And don't ask me any questions for one year." So the pastor said, "Okay, man. Let's do it." So he, uh, he worked down at the, uh, down at the granary in their town. And, uh, so, uh, man, before the first month out, they can now pay the pastor. The windows got fixed. The missionaries were now being paid. Six months into it, the roof's fixed. Everything that needed to be done by the end of the year, everything that had been neglected was now done.
Amen.
Everybody was there, man. The place was packed on that Sunday the year later. They were all like, "What is going on?" So the brother got up, and he said, "Now, folks, you saw all these things get done. You probably wonder how it happened." He said, "Well, when you guys brought your grain in, I just took ten percent of your grain and put it in this, another bin."
Amen.
"Whatever came into that bin that was your tide of your wheat and your corn, or whatever it was, I put it away, and then I sold it, and you're the ones that paid for this work."
Amen.
They were shocked. There's nothing worse than people that don't take care of the ministry of giving. If a farmer would give to God since God helped him, what makes us think that we, we can't give to God of what he's given to us? I call that robbing God.
God calls it that, too.
"Will a man rob God?" he said. He said, "You've robbed me in tides and offerings." And you know what he said? "You're cursed with a curse." Wow, that is strong, isn't it? "You're cursed with a curse." And it's so sad when you see people missing out on giving. You oughta love to give.
Amen.
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 Not just in the offering. Ten percent, that's nothing. Another fifteen, another five percent for missions, another five percent for special projects around the church. God's so good. He only asked me to give ten percent, not ninety. God's been good.
Amen.
You can't out-give God.
Amen.
You know, my dad said, "I never forgot this as a kid." He said, "You come to God with your little teaspoon." Anybody, can anybody break a five? So I don't have to give so much? Uh-huh? My dad said, "When you put, when you put your teaspoon in there, God gives you a cold shoulderful." God has always proven to me that he can do more for me than I can ever do for him.
Amen.
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 So there we have it. There we have it. Oh, there's one more point. That's number what?
Seven.
Seven. Write this down. The passing of harvest. The passing of harvest. How many of you know when you're gonna die? Anybody here know?
No.
Your pastor faded back. How long ago was that?
Last year.
Last year he faded.
New Year's Day.
You know, he could've never woke up.
I was ready for that.
Amen. Amen. But we live as though we're gonna live forever, and we never prepare to die. One of these days, Dan Nickerbocker's gonna, you're gonna hear Nickerbocker checked out. He took off for glory.
Amen.
I'm looking forward to it. Lay the burdens down. Not have to worry about anything anymore. I shouldn't be worrying anyway. I'm right in God.
Amen.
Right? We oughta be the happiest people on the face of the earth.
Yes.
Now, if you don't know when your passing is coming, then you've gotta stay busy serving the Lord until you pass.
Amen.
Well, you know, I don't feel very good. Join the club. I was talking to a preacher. Listen to this. I, I, I'm shocked when, when this happened. I was in Florida. This old guy, ninety years old, was, 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 was teaching, doing chalk artwork. Chalk artists.
His name, David?
No. And he was ninety years old. And him and his wife, she was ninety-three. And they put thirty-five thousand miles on their fifth wheel last year.
Amen.
I said, "You just ruined my day." I was thinking about slowing down.
Amen.
He goes, "You're just a young pup." That's what he said to me. I had to repent. I did. Lord, I'm sorry for wanting to slow down. So the Lord pumped it right up to fifty-seven churches this year. Is he trying to kill me? Is he trying to kill me? No, he's trying to stay, trying to get me, he's trying to get as much out of me as he can before I kick the bucket. Does that make sense? Now, this little lady over here, this young lady right over here, June, good night. She's what, ninety?
Ninety-one.
Oh, excuse me. She's ninety-one, and she's taking violin lessons? Are you out of your mind? And I, I can't use this one finger, so I use, uh, what is it you use?
It's a piece of styrofoam.
Yes, thank God for styrofoam. Now that she's got styrofoam, she can do this. No, I mean, I, I, I'm flabbergasted. What I'm trying to say is that God's not done with any of us.
Amen.
You can be used of God like you've never been used of God before. The sky is the limit. And God is the one that leads us all the way. Amen?
Amen.
Let's pray. While heads are bowed and eyes are closed, how many of you would like to show up to serve the Lord? I didn't say just come and sit and soak in sour and appeal. I'm talking about, I wanna serve the Lord. Let's all stand together.